Call the meeting to order the person, uh, one B will be pledge allegiance. Just a note, we'll be moving item number twenty to item eight A right after open forum. Item number three will be the approval of warrants, suggested motion to approve. In sign warrants twenty-seven through thirty-nine in the amount of one million, seven hundred thirty-one thousand, three hundred forty-five dollars and nine cents. Gordon. Marcella. All in favor? Six zero. Item number four, acceptance of gifts, donations and grants. Suggested motion move to approve and accept the following gifts, donations, grants in the amount of nine hundred fifty dollars. Uh, organization Florence Alessi, a hundred dollars to the heating assistance fund. William and Amy Lee in memory of Marilyn Murphy, fifty dollars to the library. Lincoln Main Federal Credit Union, five hundred dollars for rec tackle football. And Lincoln Dental LLC, three hundred dollars for rec tackle football. Marcella. Gordon. All in favor? Six zero. Chairman and town manager's comments is item number five, Mr. Manager.
Finding the election period.
What's that?
I'm finding the election period interesting.
Yeah, that's my. I don't have anything, anyone else? Planning board report, item number six. There is none.
The planning board met the end of September, they reviewed two subdivisions. Both of them by like Bill Shores, one was on Lee Road, no, I'm sorry, one was Bruce Stevens, one was Lakeville Shores. One is off the Still Road, October Brook Road, the other one off the Lee Road, they got preliminary approval. They also approved relocating Robinson's towing to River Road on, on a new lot with more room. And lastly, they uh, met with Egg Pond Road residents to um, discuss impact fees for new subdivisions. That motion was tabled for further discussion will be taken up at the next meeting.
Thank you all. Item number seven, monthly reports, any questions on monthly reports?
Want to make a comment from the town management website, it just launched uh, last week. Something might be outdated, I updated things that didn't fall over, uh, but if you see something outdated.
Thank you. On economic development, grants and loans, the economic development team has uh, acquired sixteen million, one hundred four thousand, six hundred and forty-nine. In. Grants and loans with seven million, two hundred and sixty thousand pending grants. Item number eight, open forum, the council will allow. Lincoln residents and all Lincoln taxpayers to comment prior to council action on any agenda items. Open forum questions should be forwarded to the town office by mail or email to town clerk Anne Morrison. At questions at LincolnMain.org, please have your questions and comments in by five P M. The day of the meeting. If you have any questions, please call seven nine four three three seven two. General requests may be made in open forum during a regular meeting, but will not be acted upon in the same meeting. Individuals wishing to be heard by the council will be recognized by the council chair after identifying themselves. The speaker may make brief comments and may not repeat previous statements made. The speaker must, a speaker must limit themselves to the item under discussion. The speaker must observe rules of common etiquette. The council chair may set a time limit on length of public comment and or a time limit for individual speakers. Council chair reserves the right to stop any public comment that is contrary to the rules. And to any council counselor or may make a point of order during the discussion. Any person who disrupts the council meeting may be required to leave in order to maintain orderly consideration of the matters for which a meeting was called. Would anyone like to speak at open forum? Yes, sir.
Hello, everyone, my name is Carl Stingley, I live off Frost Street. And I just spoke to Dennis Bullen before the meeting here, uh, two concerns, he said the signs are almost ready to put on Frost Street for no two trucks. My question is to the police chief, how we're gonna enforce that? And then the second item was last month, he mentioned putting rip rap. In front of the stump pond dam, and he said now would be the time to do it. And I talked to the engineer after last month's meeting, and he said if we get a lot of snowfall over the winter. And that water comes over and there's no boards there to divert it, it could start digging underneath the dam, and he thinks the rip rap would be a good idea. So I don't know if anybody wants to comment on that chart, chief.
Anyone else roll for board? Yes, ma'am.
My name's Alicia James, um, I just have some.
Is, can you speak in the mic?
My name's Alicia James, I just have some safety concerns regarding the um, rec uh, football fields on the Lee Road. Uh, my son was assaulted on Monday, September twenty-ninth there, it's like a remote location, it's um, you know, there's no lights, there's no camera. It's away from the road, so my suggestion is like getting lights there, um. Because if there was even one light where people park, that he might have. Not been assaulted because he would have been more aware of his surroundings and people there. Three uh, males were hiding behind a shed and attacked him, so he was lured there, so if there was lights or something there. I believe that would have. Wouldn't have happened. So if we can maybe. See about getting lights or even one light or something up there. Because something worse could have happened to him, he was physically okay, but. I mean, you know, something might have happened to him that would have been way worse, and it could possibly come back on the town. If something does happen, I know Joyce McLean, she died in the Melanocat. Behind the tra- trail back there, so I mean, that's another safety concern, something seriously could happen if there's no lights or anything up there. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else will perform?
Kind of crippled.
Hi, uh, my name is Michael Bickford, I live here in town of Lincoln. I am here to clear up some misinformation about myself. And my intentions and actions concerning my hangar and the airplane at the Lincoln Airport. First, thank you for councilmen for. For the opportunity to speak to you. I went to the town office on September twenty-fifth to put. To uh, make an appointment for the uh, uh, October twentieth meeting, so I could have a little longer than. And uh, to get put on the October twentieth agenda to explain my case. Last Thursday, my wife went to the town office to pick up the meeting agenda, she was told. I was not on the agenda after all, but could only speak during the time for community members. Mister Bronson had made that deci- that decision. I am not the non-caring, non-communicating person I was painted out to be on the June council meeting. I have a long time. Ongoing communication with the L O P. L A O P A members, some of them are good friends, and the town council. And the, and the town, I, I'm, I'm not very good reading the official signature. Concerning my lot and my hangar at the airport. This packet my wife has to do, you will hand out to you, will show the communications. It includes communications with Ken's Heath Strange, Rick Bronson, and shows canceled checks that my lot lease. Was paid up to date. It shows that when Ja- Wade Jordan contacted me about. Options for my hangar in April. And that I responded within the given timeframe listed in that. The cert- certify, certified letter I sent was signed for by a town employee, but I never heard back from the town. The only reason I knew a decision was made to tear. The hangar down was because of an article in the Lincoln News. That was covered. That June council meeting. Oh, I'm sorry. Tear it down was because of that article in the Lincoln News. That covered the, the June council meeting. It was quite upsetting, so I wrote a response letter. To the editor in response to the article which is the, in the packets. Afterward, I met with Rick Bronson on July twenty-first. He told me Wade Jordan didn't work here anymore, and I had been, I better get. A lawyer, he gave me Stu Jacobs' number to call him. My wife called the, and made an appointment for me to talk to Mister Jacobs the next morning, July twenty-second. We met at eight A M. And presented Mister, I presented Mister Jacobs. A packet of evidence, which is the evidence you have, I have here. Evidence which is the, I'm not sorry, I get nervous.
That's okay. I gotta, I'm gonna have to wrap you up short.
Okay, this, I only got a half a page left, uh, which is the evidence you uh, uh, have here. As to why my hangar should be destroyed, I had planned to move it to my next adjacent lot. Do it, but needed, oh, I couldn't move it because there was an electrical line over my lot. I needed that line taken down so I could move the building. It was built very rugged to do so. That crossed my law, okay, and Jacob refused to look at the hangar. With me and refused to talk about the plan to move it. He said he had been given orders by Rick Bronson to tear it down, and that is what he was going to do. The next day, July twenty-third, the hangar was torn down. The next packet you are going to get is photo evidence that although one wall of the hangar had fallen to the ground. It was secured and not a safety issue, the building had been vandalized with bracing removed. And that made one wall fall down, the pieces of metal roofing. The pieces of metal roofing were manually removed. The short rusty metal roofing blowing around the airport. Was not part of my building at all. It would, you will see tha- that my roof was not rusty, but was high quality grade, painted white steel roofing in long pieces.
I'm gonna, Mr. Victor, this, if this is gonna be a legal action of any sort. If this is gonna be, the council can't accept any paperwork, it's gotta come through the town office and come through the town attorney, okay?
Mm-hmm.
So that's fair to both sides. The, the council will be.
I'm not filing any right now.
Okay, well, I understand, but, but it sounds like you have a difference in opinion of what's taking place here. I've, I've got a, we usually only go three minutes, okay? So, but the council won't be accepting any paperwork, it won't, it, this isn't.
Nothing, none of the pictures of the hangar and all that stuff.
It needs to go through the town attorney, the town attorney will, will bring it to us.
Okay.
Okay. So. I appreciate you, I appreciate your time. No, I, I do, I, but if there's a legal action, we can't take any action tonight.
Well, I, I wasn't expecting, I, I wanted to leave these folders so you could just look at the stuff.
Yeah.
And then maybe at the next meeting you have, if you had questions and stuff, I would answer them. I didn't want to tie anybody up.
Okay. Thanks.
Is that, I mean, is that, that's all I really wanted to do.
Thank you. Anyone else for open forum? Mr. Edwards?
George Edwards, uh, just on item eighteen, I'm hiring Byron Sanderson, um, I just wanna let everyone know, I support it a hundred percent. Think it's definitely needed, um, we have so many properties that are undertaxed or not taxed, or people getting double home sit exemptions, so. I think. He's gonna pay for himself, and if there's any question on where to pay for it, again, unless the money's been spent, there's M R C money in an account. A bank account sitting there, so that could possibly be used to.
Say that again, George.
M R C money, if you remember, we got that M R C money, um, so if we need a way to pay for it, then hopefully we have more than enough ways to pay for it.
Kind of thinking, he paper himself.
Yes.
Thank you, George. Anyone else roll for forum? So we're gonna go to item twenty, which is. Discussion on the removal of the John Weatherby gold ball from L P Burstum. I asked for this discussion item. Because there were several items removed from. L P Burr School, and I was contacted by a couple folks. And uh, I asked for this to be, I contacted the Weatherby family. And because the gold ball that was issued to John Weatherby wasn't going to be kept at Ella Burr anymore. And that, by the way, the gymnasium's named after him. I wanted the council to see if they'd make a decision. Uh, but I'll need someone to suspend the rules after we have this conversation. Would anyone like to speak on this issue?
Mr. Clark. Think it would be an honor to display John did so much for this community, never asked for anything in return. And to have it removed from the school. It is just unacceptable.
I will read a little uh, message we got from a guy named. Christopher. He goes by Christopher Joe. Probably everyone will figure out who he is. Removing the gold, gold ball honoring John Weatherby. Is more than a bad decision, it's a disgrace. John wasn't just a coach. In a small mill town. He was the heartbeat. Of Lincoln youth basketball. For decades, he taught kids, me included, lessons that reach far beyond the core. Teamwork, discipline. And pride in representing their community. In short, John was an institution. Gold ball isn't just metal and paint. It symbolizes John's legacy. A visible reminder. Of what one man's dedication can mean to generations. To remove it is to forget. To leave it up is to honor the very best of who we are. The next move of those in a position to affect this outcome will be telling. Crystal.
Does anyone know why the decision was made?
You know, I, I haven't contacted Irish U sixty-seven, but I know the picture of Ella Burr has been taken down. And given to the historical society, which is good, but Ella Burr followed the school.
Right.
Um. Ashley Webster was the first principal, his plaque's been taken out of there. A flag that flew over Kuwait, which was given to the fourth grade. Is now at the history, historical society. I really don't wanna know who's making these decisions, but I think it's probably a good idea the school board looks into it. Because that's a treasure.
And it sounds like we ought to uh, make sure that we protect it until perhaps a decision is made to change the mind on that.
I don't think it's going back, in fact, I've had that conversation with family.
Oh, really?
It's gonna live right here.
Okay.
If we, if we okay it. So I'd like to have a motion to suspend the rules, please.
So.
Dan? All in favor?
Make a motion to display John Weatherby's gold ball and his picture here in the council chambers. Until his immediate family. Thinks there's more appropriate place for it.
Discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I agree with this, but I think we as a council, we need to protect the school board. I should, I would feel the principle. Say wow. I mean, it's too bad, they just throw these. Momentum away because the history is history.
It's akin to, it's akin to taking down statute.
It is, it is, you know, and I think we need to do everything we can, I mean. You know, do whatever, I should them finance whatever we need to. I mean, it's sad.
From, from the sentiment that I've taught to people, they're not getting that back. Any more discussion?
Just a question, clarifying question, when you guys say council chambers, is that in the year or this hallway as well?
In council chambers, right in here, we'll have a pedestal and a podium, or what, we'll fix.
Okay.
All in favor? Six zero. Let's, you'd like to get a picture? Perfect, let's get a picture.
On everybody. On everybody. Get, get everybody in the picture. Hi, everybody. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, didn't know we could get through that. Item nine, sign warrant for the municipal election. Suggested motion move the sign warrant for the municipal election scheduled for November fourth, two thousand twenty-five. Steve? Dan? Discussion? All in favor? Six zero. Item ten A, public hearing. Packing ordinance change fourteen oh seven dot three dot one oh one dot one. Move to open a public hearing for the purpose of hearing oral and written comments. On the proposed ordinance change to the parking ordinance fourteen oh seven dot three dot ten dot one as attached. This change is to address the parking lot of fire department is for business only and not for public parking lot. Steve? Dan? Discussion? Gordon?
Just, um, and I wanna understand, saying parking the fire department reserved exclusively for fire personnel while on duty. Um, or conducting official fire business, so there's no parking for public, uh, even coming for a short visit? No.
I thought if, if we, well, we can, we can talk about it, so we, we gotta move to open the public forum.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, all in favor?
Sure.
Six zero. And we start at seven twenty-six P M. Chief?
Lee Miller, police chief, um, so I guess we can. It's for fire business.
That's, yeah, so.
That didn't seem to quite make it. Okay, so the fire department is for fire business and only, so basically it was prevent somebody from parking. Let's say a camper there for months on a time.
So I'm gonna suggest that fire personnel while on duty or, um, citizens while conducting.
Normal course of business.
Sure.
Anyone else? Hey, we're owed at seven twenty-seven. Ten B, approve ordinance change, parking ordinance change fourteen oh seven dot three dot ten dot one.
Uh, and move so as just with that amendment.
The public can park there while doing the normal course of business, yes.
Yeah.
Gordon?
Mr. Chairman, will we be putting up signage there to explain?
Well, I think they're gonna have to put signage up if there's no parking except doing normal course of business. Public. Any further discussion? All in favor? Six zero. Eleven A, public hearing municipal code general assistance ordinance with maximums, appendices H, A through H, zero five one two. Suggested motion move to open a public hearing for the purpose of hearing oral and written comments. On the proposed amendment to the municipal code general assistance ordinance. And appendices A through H in its entirety. Marcella? Dan? All in favor? Six zero. We're in at seven twenty-eight. Gordon?
Um, I would love a summary of the changes from the previous, I noticed it said that it hasn't been changed since twenty twenty-one. Uh, I'm assuming there must be changes in the amount of money, uh, income requirements, et cetera. No.
Melissa Cantala, treasurer um and general assistance administrator. Um, the money changes every year. The state sends us their guidelines every year. So that is the appendices A through H. Um, I believe I sent you the both last year's and this year's amounts earlier today, Gordon. Um, it was part of that email that I sent.
Sorry, I apparently didn't.
Okay. Um, so basic math. They've got about a ten percent increase in all areas of the maximums. Last year, um, the overall maximum income that could apply for G A for a family of three was one thousand one hundred and sixty nine dollars. And this year they have raised that to one thousand two hundred and seventy one dollars. Um, they they adjust it slightly every single year for those maximums.
That that's the income for what period?
For a month.
That's a.
For for a person applying for general assistance. If they're over that income, um, it would be a denial. If they're just below that income, they only get approved for the difference between the Mac, what they earn to the maximum if there is a need. Sometimes there's not a need. If somebody's expenses don't even meet that maximum income. So there's a lot that goes into doing a general assistance appointment. And a lot of research that goes into it. The ordinance itself, um, the change in the ordinance itself, um, MMA has written that with the state's guidance. And it's mostly definitions in the front of that ordinance. There are a lot of definitions. And that is mostly what um the state or main municipal has updated is the different terms they use on G A. G A has stayed basically the same since I've started here eighteen years ago. Um, they just have to update terms that people use. And so it's been about five years since the ordinance has been updated. So that is what they did with this.
Any more questions from the council? Thank you.
Thank you.
We're owed at seven thirty two. Eleven B amendment municipal code general assistance ordinance with a maximum appendices A through H zero five one two. Suggested motion move to amend the municipal code general assistance ordinance appendices A through H in its entirety and emergency preamble as attached. Emergency preamble. Whereas ordinances of the town council do not become effective until forty five days after passage unless enacted as emergencies. And whereas the purpose of this is to adopt the general assistance ordinance and appendices to update general assistant maximums in order to meet the state guidelines. Therefore, this needs to be done immediately. Then whereas in the judgment of the town council, these facts create an emergency within the meaning of Article two, section two twelve of the town charter and requires the amendment of the municipal code, general assistance, ordinance and maximums as immediately necessary in order to conduct appointments with clients and determine eligibility. Marcela? Dan? Questions from the council? Discussion? All in favor? Six zero. Item twelve, update Reese Across America.
Thank you. Welcome to be here to do this like that. So she answered by capability. Did prepare packets for you guys though about where we are with the financing. And.
We'll have to take this up next month though.
Yeah.
Uh, my name's Sean, a Ben's Communications Director, but speaking on behalf of Reed's Across America. So um in these packets, we have like a thermometer here that everyone can kind of see. We're about halfway there. Um, total money raised so far is almost fifty seven hundred. We need twelve thousand five hundred or a little over twenty uh twelve thousand to go. Um, so the remaining is six thousand seven thou- or six thousand seven hundred sixty one dollars and twenty six cents. Uh, so far we done fundraising at September Fest as well as Table at Stakes and Stuff, Mountain Wine Keg. Uh, Wally World is gonna be doing or Walmart, sorry, is gonna be doing um a table there. It's just instinct, all right? It's just instinct. Walmart has had the table there um uh that people can see as they go in. They're doing a couple helping out with their donations and all. Um, at the Halloween Bash, uh, they will be having a donation bucket in the fifty fifty raffle. Um, and then they'll be at the craft fair as well. So. Uh.
What is what is that timeframe?
December first is when.
Okay.
Yep. So we have one more.
Twelve thousand.
Yeah, that's when we have to have it all.
Can raise money till then.
Yeah, we can raise money till then. We're gonna be promoting it a lot now. Now it's kind of crunch time. Um, so you know, we're gonna be working together. Reed's Across America and Howland has a whole page and everything like that. So we're gonna be stealing some ideas from them, um, especially going forward to next year too. So.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions?
Just that business was called Walmart.
I command I gotta check. Donated.
So uh you can take it right to the credit union, actually. So any Reed's Across America donations can go right to the credit union. There's an account there. Um, there's also fifty fifty raffle tickets that you can buy there. You can buy that blazing trails, can buy that what just baked and you're buying here as well through Melissa.
And is this all out on our website now?
Uh, if it is not, it will be. Like I said. Yeah, like I said, there was about uh everything that I did for the past month didn't update. So now I'm chasing my tail. Um, but this will be going up there um as soon as possible though for sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else for and thank you, Mr. Miller. Anyone else for discussion on Reed's Across America? Item thirteen, accept bid. Suggested motion move to approve the bid from Ogden Mechanical in the amount of forty two thousand nine hundred thirty dollars, twenty cents to install a new natural gas boiler at the fire station. Dan?
Second.
Gordon? Discussion?
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
My understanding, we only got one bid.
And Mr. Fire Chief?
Hi, West Brown Fire Chief. We sent out five. We got one that we could open and we got one to come in after the day.
Now, Mr. Chairman, can we retrofit? I mean, you can retrofit furnaces, oil furnaces to natural gas. And if if this was warranted, why wasn't in the budget?
It wasn't.
It was. Yes. Okay.
We had to vote to bid. So the money is there for it. You just have to vote to accept.
So correct me if I'm wrong, but we're lucky to get this file with it.
That's correct.
Yeah, last year it was in dire straits.
The boiler itself doesn't mean we can retrofit it because it's got a big crack and then it's water squirt now. We've been lucky to get this file.
So so this is a brand new one.
Yeah.
And does that include labor?
Yes.
Everything's included.
Mr. Chairman, did the second bid come in was lower than this?
We didn't open it.
Why not?
Because it was after after the after the big day that you represented.
I mean, I thi- I think, Mr. Chairman, that we ought to well bid again. I mean, we have another six weeks for the cold weather towns. And see if we get this knocked down a little bit because the second bid mean that we didn't open could have been ten grand left.
No. Mr. Thomas.
Yeah, they had ample opportunity to replace their business. They didn't do it. And if we start to allow that type of activity to continue, I can see this becoming a problem when uh we have other bids down the road. This could become a a problem for us. Now that boiler has been a problem ever since I was there. And uh we've had it serviced uh and it broke down several times when I was there. And uh it was, I remember uh looking into that when I was the deputy or excuse me, the director of public safety. And we needed it back then. So that's my thoughts.
Hello? Wilson?
We went through this a year and a half ago with the library with the bid. Ogden came in less than anybody else when they bid on the library. They did it within the timeframe that they said they would do it. Everything works great over there. And I think we received three bids there and the next one up from Ogden was about a twenty thousand dollar difference.
And I I I do think if we deviate from the bid process, we'd be opening ourselves up with several.
I mean, we could reduce the bid and we have the right to.
You have what you do. Absolutely.
Then we could open it.
Absolutely.
Yeah, but we only got one bid and what we don't want to do is have that person, that company come back knowing that there is a good chance that they could charge us more the next time.
I feel this is a fair. Cause we've had one put in that church. And I think it was a little more than that. So I think it's pretty fair.
They come up, they would do this in basement, look it all over, recommended what we needed.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Six zero. Thanks, Chief. Uh, fourteen, approve going out to bid. Move through seeking qualified bids for the purchase of a mini pumper truck number five thirty seven. Gordon?
Second.
Dan? Discussion?
Mr. Chairman, are we gonna have a minimum bid set on this? I mean, I I would like to think that's worth thirty thousand dollars, forty thousand dollars.
Uh, I'm not sure the way this reads that it's clear that what we are doing here is selling this thing as opposed to buying.
Yeah, we're not buying, we're selling it.
No, I know, but I mean, yeah, you know, I hate to see someone get this for five thousand dollars and and I can remember a few years back that we needed this certain piece of equipment. Do we really even use this piece of equipment? And if we do sell it, is uh we're gonna be selling for enough to purchase a U T V? You know, so I just hate to sell it for for next to nothing because that truck adds value.
Is that why we're selling this to buy a U T V?
Well, I my recommendation tonight to the board is that we put a minimum bid of forty five thousand dollars on it.
Forty five?
Forty five. And that with the money, we purchased a new TV that we can put a pump on it and actually go into that mini lakes that we have to rescue people. Right now we have do not have a snowmobile. We do not have a four wheeler. And we don't have any way to get it. So when the call's coming, we have to depend on other people in town, the A T B class, some of the to do a rescue or call other departments, which is worked out, but takes time.
So we minimum bid of forty five thousand dollars.
You won the show with a thirty, Mr. Here.
Well, that's that was.
Trying to give it away on us.
By goodness.
Now, can we purchase a U T V at forty five thousand? I hope, thank you.
And I think if we shop around and maybe boys a five hundred grams being extra for the expert equipment.
Yeah, I'll think of that.
But but we don't pump. We just want to put a tank with a small pump. So really a small A T B do that, but we want one to put tracks on it so we can get around one new point and kill.
That's fifteen grand just for track.
Any more? All in favor? Six zero. Thanks, Chief.
Yeah.
Approved ambulance financing and authorized treasurer. Suggested motion move through approve entering into a four year municipal loan agreement with the Child Savings Bank for the purpose of purchasing a two thousand twenty five Ford E four fifty chassis medics model one sixty six type three ambulance. The initial payment is to come from capital funds in the F Y two thousand twenty six budget in the amount of sixty thousand dollars and subsequent payments to come from yearly operating budget. The council also offer off through the council also authorizes the treasurer to sign any necessary loan lease documents. Uh huh. Gordon? Second. Dan? Discussion? Can I ask Melissa a question? Melissa, didn't we just get? Uh, we had a loan that we just paid off last year that we were paying on.
Yeah.
And can you refresh my memory? I can't remember what it was, but we had an equipment item.
I believe it was the here.
That we just finished with. Okay. Anyone? All in favor? All votes. Five one was settled. And discussion Cemetery Park Recreation U T V, item sixteen.
Bernie Crocker, Cemetery Parks and Rec Director. Um, so pretty much discussion, just to answer the questions you guys had at the last council meeting um in regards to our current machine. Um, so we had had that looked at prior um by Jordan um equipment. I had them emailed them down there. They got back to me. So in the current condition that it's in right now, sitting in our shop, it's worth one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. That's a U T V that's worth one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. In its current condition as it sits right now. Um, if we were to fix the machine, if it's operating, it'd be worth five thousand dollars. That's its current value based on those two things. Um, so the cost of replacing the engine would be nine thousand two hundred and forty two dollars. That's six thousand seven hundred and sixty two for the engine and two thousand four hundred and eighty for labor. So it also has issues currently like a water pump, coolant tank, head gasket, parking brake, and there's a seal in the a seal or there is a leak somewhere in the rear end. Um, they don't believe that replacing those things will fix the machine in the hole because there is a crack in the engine. So the engine would need to be replaced.
Well, this was retrieved.
Believe it was purchased in twenty thirteen. The hours do look low for nine hundred and twenty hours currently on the machine. But it's not normal, just like A T V trail riding hours. It's, you know, all in dirt multiple times for the full size burials that we use it for um walking trails in the past uh when those were getting set up, constructed. It's used during moon fest. Uh, trash, all that stuff. Um, so it does have some hard hours on it. Um, I can't answer for the maintenance on it prior twenty nineteen. Um, I do have handwritten notes from David Emery who did regular maintenance on it, oil changes, things of that nature. Those go back to twenty nineteen. Um, that's the the maintenance that I got on it right now.
So it's had regular maintenance on it since two thousand nineteen?
That I'm aware of, yes.
But it's twelve years old.
Yes.
It would cost ten thousand dollars roughly.
Uh.
For to fix it.
To the engine. Yeah, to fix the other things that need to be fixed on it as well. Um, that would be an additional twenty four hundred, thirteen hundred for parts, eleven hundred for labor. Approximately three weeks after the parts come in. And then that is that they don't find anything else when they are fixing those other, you know, things that are wrong.
So that's an eleven thousand six forty two to fix it.
Something like that, yes.
Would all of problems about?
Give or take, yeah.
Yeah, how much is in the?
The the moment that we had at the time was the bid that I put out for approval last month was uh twenty one hundred. the bid that I put out for approval last month was, uh, twenty-one hundred eight twenty-two.
Say it again?
Twenty-one thousand eight twenty-two.
Is there anybody?
I do have it in my capital fund.
Capital fund?
Yeah, it's part of the rec equipment. And one other thing I wanted just to mention too is possibly just going back to rebid, um, it has been six weeks since those bids. Because the, there were some rebates and stuff on those that could have changed whatnot, so I don't know if the pricing would actually be the same or not.
Is it possible to get a used one today?
I can look into, I can look into used ones.
A good used one.
Yeah, I can look into that, kind of see what's out there as well, um, I can jump to these salespeople, see what they, you know, recommend on that market.
That doesn't come with any warranty either, use, use the.
Most likely not, no.
Is this, uh, you, and you can't use this U T V as a, as a state because of the, uh,
No, currently it's just, it's sitting dead in the water, um, it just overheats way too quickly, and we believe it probably needs a battery now to start as well.
Any idea what cracked the engine or cracked the engine block?
Couldn't, I, I.
So, right now that's worth fifteen hundred dollars?
Uh, twelve fifty.
Twelve fifty?
Yes.
Would they give that to us on a trade on a new one?
Yes, uh, on one, on my bid with Jordan equipment, they were giving us. They were giving us the twelve fifty, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, we'd be foolish to trade it, because if we get a comparable size of piece of equipment, the tires you want to probably have. They're probably gonna even think the price could affect. Trade it in one.
You know what the condition are on the tires on it now? They're not made for, uh, pro- for road use, they're more of the trail tires.
That is Cody Norris, he's my cemetery supervisor.
I'm Cody Norris, I'm the cemetery supervisor.
Mr. Chairman, do we need a, do we need it right now?
Can, cur- currently, we're near the end of the season, um, with freezing temperatures coming. Um, I don't anticipate meeting it anytime. I, like I said, I can't say it will happen until that burial and on, went on, um. So it doesn't have to be something necessarily right now. I was thinking, you know, it could be January, February, you know, sometimes just before, but by April, I would say.
We'll, we'll put the bid process.
Yep.
And see what we can do on a new bid, and then come back in December and we'll look at it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, the real war, we had to ward that bid, they can throw back six weeks ago, I mean, award, no, yeah, so. Item seventeen, approve extended hours, zero seven hundred. Suggested motion move to approve extending the library open hours until four P M on Saturday, November eighth, for an author Baldorian and book signing event to be held from one to four. Gordon?
Second.
Marcelo? Discussion? All in favor? Item eighteen, authorize town manager hire a building lister. Suggested motion move to authorize the town manager, I, Byron Sanderson, as a building lister for the assessing department where the salary could be paid by the taxes gained by finding and listing unassessed properties. So, Wilson?
Second.
Dan, discussion?
Chairman, I, when this all came to light back last May, it was stated to the council that moving forward would be having some of these properties taken care of, and we'd have a dollar amount on how much money it has come in for that. Has that happened?
I don't believe it is, because the money won't come in till the next budget.
Uh, at least the commitments, were the commitments added?
I don't believe so.
Why? Why was it stated?
Yeah, we're hiring children to do that, we've had people all working. I guess, I, I can't answer that rule, can you answer that?
So this has been an ongoing issue, and if you remember correctly, a plan was come up with last June for beginning of the summer, that Ed and Amanda would go out and list property. Obviously, Amanda is not working today, Ed has a great asset, he's helping with a lot of things, but he's new to Lincoln and he's not familiar with Lincoln, Lincoln's a very big, broad area, so to send him out by himself was not practical. Once commitment happened, which was late because of software issue, I was aware that there were still properties out there that needed addressing. It became very apparent to me, more time went by, the problem was just gonna exacerbate and get worse. So in the conversations over time, Byron Sanderson came to my attention, and he worked for a revale company that did low and, and field. He has experience as a lister, he knows what he's looking for, he knows what I'm looking for. And he has been very effective, he's gone out two days, he's visited twenty-four properties, one bill alone is gonna generate thirty-four hundred dollars. It's my opinion that what he's going to bring in, we can include in a report monthly in the assessing side to show you what we're bringing in and what we're billing out, and it will more than pay for his salary. I took him for what I could, I practically begged him to work with me, because he said he was done, he didn't want any more to do with it, it was a rough job, he was burnt out, he didn't want to. Trust me when I say he's not doing this as a favor for me. He is doing this because like the other people in this room, they want to pay their fair share of taxes, so he's gonna work until he leaves for Florida the first week of December. I'd like to remind you that in September of twenty twenty-two, I agreed to work beyond retirement, provided I did one job. And that was economic development. At the current time, right now, I am doing three full-time jobs. I am helping out doing code, and Bruce Arnold, we did code with the idea that he would do the inspections, and I would stay in and issue the permits. Bruce, on occasion, is out, because again, he's retirement age, and he can't always be here. So there's a deficit right there, so we have an extreme deficit in code enforcement, and I did not realize how busy Amanda was. Last month alone, I did over sixty permits, and that doesn't include planning board, that doesn't include questions, that doesn't include the civil issues coming up. In addition to that, may I remind you, everybody is extremely pleased with their tax bills. And let me tell you how popular I am and how everybody really feels that it is a good recreational activity to come in and yell and insult the assessors. So in addition to that, I have grant deadline for million-dollar loans that I have to keep track of and keep going. Vicky Rushbell is helping out, but again, I need help. I'm worn out, I'm old, I'm tired.
You shouldn't rule.
I did say it, in, in, in five months, I'm gonna be sixty-eight freaking years old. This is a lot of work for one person, and I'm tired, I need help, and I would really appreciate the council's support on it.
Would you be happy if we supported your own?
I would, I would break right down this table and bawl my eyes out.
All in favor?
Mr. Chairman? With that being said, we've hired Byron already?
He's worked two days with the understanding that if you don't approve it, he's done.
So why did we hire someone without the approval?
Chairman, it's like, Mr. Mayor.
That is very dishonest.
Get on with it as fast as possible.
And also, is this gonna take care of the double and triple homestead exemption? Is it gonna take care of a, a commitment that I saw that relative is getting a veteran's preference and neither one of them are veterans?
I would like to address that issue if I might.
Yes, ma'am.
That has come up multiple times. The Department of Revenue came in and went through every single solitary homestead exemption we had. They found three duplicates at which we had to pay back the reimbursement for a total of seven hundred and eighty dollars. That was it. And as far as veterans, the veterans have to provide me with a D D two fourteen or evidence that they are disabled, otherwise, they don't get that exemption.
Well, I think you ought to go look at my aunt Beverly and uncle Warwick's property, because we're the one of veterans and they get the veterans property.
The only way they could have got that Sheldon is if they applied the documentation.
They wouldn't have done that, because there's one's deceased and one's.
Hey, the discussion, the discussion isn't about veterans, but that's not what we.
Well, what I'm discussing is when we hire someone to do a job, we don't give them fifteen asks where. They, this has been an ongoing problem for the last twenty years. And I can't get behind it, because no disrespect to Byron, but it is bad policy to put someone to work and they're not even on the payroll for workers comp or anything else. I mean, if Byron would have got hurt without the blessing from us.
He could contract, I believe.
But still, it, it's, it's not the way to do business, and I can't support it.
That's a ten ninety-nine, isn't it?
Yes, yes.
If you ever hired this person, that's, it's not the way to do business.
Anyone else? Yes, Dave. Yeah, so, um, personnel, I mean, if there's an emergency like that, like we have here, that I think is an emergency, you can make those hires. So, I'm all for it. Your personnel. Who else, Mr. Dan? No? All in favor? All opposed? Congratulations, Drew. And I think that position is gonna pay for itself tenfold. Number nineteen, discussion update on police department building.
Lee Miller, Police Chief, uh, so I just wanted to give an update of where we're at, police building, by the police station. There's a beautiful trailer up front now, um, so.
Like the Taj, but really.
It's, it's, it's very, very nice, um, so we'll be in that in a couple days. Uh, Brittany's already out there today, um. It's a kind of a hodgepodge of how we're gonna make this work, so we can use the lobby, so we're gonna put something out to the public to vote, what exactly? Still use the red phone at the lobby, go to the red phone, then either the officer come get you, or Brittany will, will see you, but um, obviously for security things, we just can't have people walking in the trailer. So, as far as the, the fixing of it, the landlord is fixing it, um, we are meaning the town's going to do our own testing, um, so we're gonna test it before, test it after, uh, we're gonna use the same company that the court used. And they're coming tomorrow to do the pre-testing, and then, once he gets it done, we've agreed, because everybody that I talked to says you test it before you put sheetrock back up.
Right.
And so he disagrees with that, but he's agreed to let us do that. Hopefully it passes, if it doesn't pass.
Have they tested the upstairs, the courthouse?
The courthouse up in, the courthouse, the upstairs of the courthouse, there's not a mold problem. It's where they were, where the, uh, court records were, so in behind our building, there's a one room that they used, and there was mold in that building, in that room, the court's never going to go back in that room. Um, I haven't spoke to the court, but they, they were supposed to come back this month, they didn't, um, I think that's more of reasons because we are doing our part now, and so I don't think they want to be disrupted by, I mean, we make any noise down there, the judge is like calling down, going, quiet. So, yeah, so I think that's why.
What's her response for that?
Well, I'm not gonna say no to the judge. But that's kind of where we're at, um, I mean, we have done first reports on all the, uh, uh, on all the officers. Um, the Department of Labor was involved, and the union was involved, uh, we still have to work out a few things with the union, but, uh, hopefully we can make that all work.
But the Department of Labor likes that point.
Yes, they like our plan, they closed out the case, as long as, as long as it, it comes back and it's tested and it doesn't pass, I think then that's where there's gonna be a, an issue, so.
Clearly good heat.
Oh, it, it has heat, I think it'll heat up in a second.
We'll have that fixed while the wind is over late.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item twenty-one, executive session, thanks for coming, folks, and we do need it now, yep.